It's all six o'clock, right?
Six o'clock, fire department morning. I thank you all for coming this evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Mover to second here, if I may. Mr. Morton and Mr. Manson. Now therefore be resolved that this February the twenty fifth, twenty twenty five regular meeting council be called to order at six oh one PM by Mayor Gould and all are present. And that form has been achieved. Our as there are members in the audience today who may be here for the planning board presentation. We will suspend the procedural bylaw for that agenda item to allow questions from the floor for the planning board. So starting with the the planning board presentation, the planning presentation, thank you. Approval of the agenda may have a mover and a second here. Counselor Morton and Counselor Latimer was just snuck in ahead of there. Martin. Latimer. Now therefore be resolved that the council for the corporation of Calvin hereby approves the agenda as circulated all in favor. And that is carried. Are there there are declarations of pecuniary or conflict of interest? We have one by Counselor Grant, and is that for just one item?
Item eight point seven.
Are there any other conflict of interest? Or pecuniary interest? No? All right, going forward, approval of the previous minutes. Moved by Counselor Manson, seconded by Counselor Latimer. Now therefore be resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting of February the eleventh, twenty twenty five be approved as presented and circulated. Any questions, comments? None? All in favor? I am as well, that's carried. Delegations to council? We have none. So moving on. This is arriving from previous council meetings. This is item six point one, the night piece of landfill capacity. A clarification for council members. Mover to second here, please. Counselor Morton, Counselor Manson. Okay, have you all? Before I read the resolution, have you all had a chance to to read? The the reports? Are there questions or comments? None? So the report stands as written and presented before. Right? Right, all right. Now therefore be resolved that the council for the corporation municipality of Calvin received and discussed the night piece of correspondence. No further actions required, all those in favor. And that is carried. Six point two is the environmental advisory committee. Mover to second here, please. Dean Grant, Counselor Grant and Counselor Latimer. Whereas resolution twenty twenty five fifty eight was passed by council at a council meeting held February the eleventh, twenty twenty five, directing staff to provide terms of reference for the newly formed environmental advisory committee. And whereas the CEO and the public work superintendent have provided council with the draft terms of references, terms of reference for the environmental advisory committee. And furthermore, here be it hereby resolved that council approves of the terms of reference for the environmental advisory committee as presented. Any discussion, any amendments? Why I missed the run? Call it to a vote, all those in favor. And that is carried. Consent agenda items for information purposes. Mover to second here. Counselor Manson and Counselor Morton. So we've all had a chance to read the consent agenda. Were there any items that anyone wishes to move forward? Counselor Morton.
Seven point four, I would request that the town should be deployed on the website or mail out to the people that don't use the internet, which are a few, quite a few in our community. Because I was talking to two of them today, didn't know anything about it. And this is one of the things that keeps getting missed. Because we don't address the seniors that are in our community that don't use the internet.
Thank you. Just before we move this forward, of course, it is on the website because it's in the consent agenda.
Actually, I was asking for it to be like a mail out or posted on the bulletin board somehow to get it out to people so they see it. Because there's quite a few people in our community that don't do the website, don't do the all right, so don't come to these meetings, don't listen to the YouTube video of the meetings and
right on. So your request is to
either do a mail out or get it out to the people in our community to visit as that very good information on that.
All right, so you're requesting to do a mail out and bring that forward to the next meeting?
Yes.
All right.
I just want to say it's not on our Facebook page because we can't post to the apps of Facebook and DSAV did not have their own document ready yet.
I didn't realize that.
So I just want to be sure that you want us to incur an expense on behalf of DSAV to promote their materials.
The a mail out will cost us sixty dollars.
Yeah, but that is what you're asking?
Yes. I don't think the community would be that out of shape on a sixty dollar payment.
No, I just want to
That's to bring it forward to the next meeting as as a proposal. All right, thank you, Counselor Morton, great. Any other items to bring forward?
If I could just comment on that, so we do pay a lot of levy, a high levy to them. Wonder if they could come in and do a chat about some of these, like we have the collect this evening, give you some expertise. I wonder if it'd be possible to expand upon what you're saying and bring them in, stop with additional dwelling units. Any housing subsidies that might be available.
So then, on the list of speakers that I did send you about a month ago, they're on there.
One step back, thank you.
So if they're on there, rather than doing mail in, we might also consider that being our information source.
Well, as Counselor Morton says, people don't look at our YouTube channel and it's unusual that we have guests in the audience, so.
Okay, well, we'll bring them over.
We could ask DSAV to mail it out.
Yes.
I mean, why are you saying materials or anybody else? That was my point.
So hopefully we can help promote their services.
Well, let's bring them forward to the next meeting, Calvin. Okay, so are there any others? Okay, thank you very much. Now therefore be resolved that the council for the corporation municipality of Calvin hereby receive the consent agenda and move the following forward for discussion at the next meeting, the DSAV housing system services overview and a way contact public with this information. All those in favor? And I am as well, so that motion is carried. So next move to administrative matters, presentation, education and training. Talik Engineering and Mr. Stephen McCarthy is here. Thank you for coming tonight. So I will turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Gould, thank you, council for having me. My name is Stephen Carter, as the mayor said, I am a land use planner with Pollock in North Bay. The light work background, just for people's knowledge, is that I was the current operations planner, senior planner in the city of North Bay for a better part of a decade. And then I was with Impact for another eight years, so have a unique kind of understanding on some of the things that you would like some clarification on tonight. The intent of my presentation is to quickly run through some some slides, and I mean quickly. Hopefully Trish can keep up. And then we can go to the meeting if you want to ask some specific questions. I would just say that this information I'm providing is a high level overview. I don't want to speak about anyone's specific property or anything like that. You can appreciate. And then I'd also say that you also have an MMAH advisor and of course, you know, a legal counsel if you're if you're at all doubtful of any sort of interpretation or policy matter that you want some clarification on.
Thank you.
With that, I'll do a quick presentation. You're ready, Trish, let me know. Think if you go to the view, you can go false screen and get rid of all that menu and everything. Little view menu. There we close that, sure. There we go, good enough. Okay. We can jump to the next slide, thank you. So some of the topics I wanted to cover, I just wanted to talk about some policy updates that just make council aware of them and what it means for you. And then talk a little bit about, I understand that there's been some question about, you know, the roles of what we do, what the planning board does, what staff do, and the roles and responsibilities of each, so that we're kind of clear on the development process. And I can answer specific questions about that, yes, please go ahead. I think there's a little arrow on the bottom right that you can just go one slide at a time that helps you there.
Sticks me in the middle of it.
Oh, really? Nice.
Could I have one little second?
Yes.
Counselor Latimer doesn't have this presentation and can he see it? If not, can we quickly email it to him?
Counselor Latimer, can you see the screen?
No, I can't. Is it possible they do presentation mode or or email it to me, that's fine.
It should be able to.
It's like this, when you see, I'm trying to try and screen.
See the red leave button, the share to the left of it, if you hit that one, it should bring us some options as to which window you want to share. So if you go
Presentation.
Presentation, yeah. Hit the the window button there and then pick that one, that'll determine.
Okay.
Then it's, it'll let it read, so he should be able to see it now.
Okay, done, perfect, okay.
And you can minimize him as well.
I can see it now, it's good, thank you.
Thanks, Latimer. Thank you for the text report, Counselor. Okay, so with the purpose of this slide is is that you are at a very unique time in planning history in this province, there's been more change in the last five years than there has been maybe in the last fifty. A lot of the acts and the and the rules that have been passed by the government are designed to address our housing crisis and give more powers to the municipality. And some of those changes directly impact the way we do business in terms of planning act approvals and planning act applications. Next slide, please, Trish. Two in particular that are since April, so almost a year now, we had the Cutting Red Tape to Build More Homes Act, which is Bill one eighty five. So that included a total of seventeen different acts that were amended by that, including the Planning Act, the Development Charges Act and others. And then, of course, we had a provincial planning statement that was released in twenty twenty four as well. Next slide, please. The provincial planning statement was put into effect October twentieth, twenty twenty four. I think everyone who's been around council long enough knows that municipalities exist at the whim of the province, right? They were, you're very much bound by their rules and their and their legislation. And it's, I can imagine from a council seat, it's very difficult sometimes because you can't operate outside, you can't color outside those lines. But in the planning world, what they do is they pass the provincial planning statement, and that is the overarching rule that implements the planning act for municipalities. So decisions have to be, official plans have to be aligned with the provincial planning statement. And decisions that you make around this council chambers have to be in line with the official plan. The zoning bylaw is your implementation of at what I call the grassroots level of of planning, right? Your setbacks, your lot coverage, all those things that are municipally decided on and passed. So provincial policy statements are updated every four years usually. This is the latest version. And to summarize, it's all about housing. It's it's all about housing opportunities, they've opened up more policy for housing in rural areas than ever before as well. And some supportive policies for that. Your official plan is supposed to be updated to be locked in sync with the provincial planning statement. And I believe there's a process that your East Nipissing Planning Board goes through to update that, so on the directive of the province, and then the province has to approve all official plans. So little context and low background. And that's, thank you, Trish, next slide. Then we jump into the roles and responsibilities quickly and I often get asked, what, next slide, please, what is planning exactly? The managing change and promoting efficient land use and development patterns to build strong, resilient and healthy communities, protect the environment, public health and safety, facilitate economic growth. I know council is particularly interested and concerned that last one, right? And next slide, please, Trish. And so when we, how does that happen? I talked a little bit about that just a moment ago, there's the planning hierarchy in Ontario. And way down at the bottom is municipalities, right? So the planning act is passed by the province, the provincial policy statement, or in this case, the provincial planning statement as it's now known, is passed and implements the planning act to to the municipal level. Sometimes we have provincial plans, like the Green Belt Plan that we heard about last year, some of the controversy, or the Golden Horseshoe Plan, or we have the Growth Plan for Northern Ontario. Those are also plans that are geography specific. And then if you're not a single tier municipality like Calvin is, sometimes you have an upper tier municipality that that has their official plans and the two have to jive, it's another layer of of policy. In your case, and I want to speak to that, this is not to be confused by the East Nipissing Planning Board official plan. All that simply is, is a number of municipalities getting together to pass a regionally specific official plan, it's not the same as two tiered, just to clarify that, and we'll get to that in a moment. Then you have municipal zoning bylaws, and that's where the rubber meets the road at the municipal counter. That's all the things that you need, lot coverage, setbacks, what you can do in a certain zone, parking requirements, all that sort of detail that is passed through municipal zoning bylaw, and a zoning bylaw is applicable law. So it's in effect, when it's in effect, it's applicable law. And then in some cases, municipalities use site plan control agreements, development permits and other things to implement some things, and then ultimately building permits have to be aligned with everything. Okay, so there's your hierarchy from top down. Next slide, please, the planning act, as I said, how how land uses are to be controlled, the ground rules for land use planning. And then that important third bullet that all decisions shall be consistent with the provincial planning statement. That's the expectation that that mentor of mine described it as if you're going in this direction twelve o'clock with with a decision as council, you're allowed to go to ten to two. You can't go to five, right? In terms of the, in terms of the direction, it has to be consistent with provincial policy that's that's passed down to you. All right, but they do recognize, of course, the decision making authority and accountability of municipal councils of planning. Ultimately, through the implementing zoning bylaw, which should be consistent with your official plan and should be consistent with your provincial planning statement, they recognize that you want to control certain aspects of how your communities develop. And and the land uses that you're allowed within the community. All right. Next slide, please, Trish. Other tools that they put into to the planning act that for municipalities that take advantage, that you can take advantage of, and have, you have to historically establish local planning administration, so we'll come back to this, but that is what your reason of seeing planning board is. It's planning administration. In lieu of having your own planning staff, which is very difficult for a lot of smaller municipalities. You you amarm me through a planning board and they do that for you, what do they do? The planning administration involves the mailing out, the having the meetings, the these, the drafting of zoning bylaws, the drafting of consent application, all the consent certificates, all those things are part of the mandate of the planning board, we'll come back to that in a moment. So of course, you have your official plan, again, that's passed through the planning board and your planning policies. You have your implementing zoning bylaw that's done at a local level. And you also have the ability to adopt community improvement plans, which through your official plan to to incent certain areas or, you know, put incentives in place to to attract development to a certain part of your community or whatever it is. We can circle back on that, I'm sure there's going to be questions on that. And I think I'll skip through the rest of that in the interest of the time. So when I, when I said you have to color within the lines, I know everyone around the council, it's not meant to be preachy. You know how many acts and things that you have to operate within, and there's a few, that's not all. Right? The Ontario Building Corps, they are Affordable Housing Act, Development Charges Act, Municipal Act, Planning Act, Environmental Assessment Act, Fisheries Act, all these things are policy that the province implements that you must adhere to. Next slide, please. So some of the some of the direction and obviously the the interest of the government in charge right now is to solve the housing crisis. And they've done that by really updating the provincial planning statement to say that it is priority number one. It is about generating an appropriate housing supply, making land available for development, providing infrastructure to support development, balancing housing with resources and implementation. So what does that mean at the local council level? It means that that you now have the support of the province to to start looking at, you know, housing solutions for your individual communities. Come back to how you do that in a moment. So next slide, thank you, Trish, you had me this time. PPS laws planning authorities to identify new settlement areas or areas for expansion in existing settlement areas at any time, and they will no longer be required to demonstrate the need for such expansion under the new simplified flexible approach. So giving more power to municipalities to decide when and where they're going to grow. Now Calvin, that's that's different, you don't have an urban center, you don't have a rural area, it's it's all one one designation, right? So you don't have an urban service boundary or so some of the policies written with us in Southern Ontario context or larger municipality context, but the important takeaway from that is that the policies are all supportive of trying to build more housing, which ultimately for the municipality of Calvin is your your assessment growth, right? To tie it all in together, keeping your taxes down. Next slide, please. The official plan, the East Nipissing official plan. That's the goals and objectives, it's got to be consistent with the policies of the provincial planning statement, as we said. It's updated every five years to reflect the direction of council and the community, or it's supposed to be. The goal of these Nipissing official plan, and this is copied right from their their opening, to attain a healthy and economic base while it supports sustainable and orderly community development, while conserving the attributes and resources of the rural area. That speaks to maintain the rural character, grow carefully, but put policies in place to make it easier to do so. Slide, please. And again, this is copied, I won't read the whole slide, there's a lot of words on there. This is from your official plan, it was authored by Glenn Hinek and some of the the goals and the key components of the official plan. Okay, the objectives of the official planner are listed there. The first one, developing strategies to provide a full range of housing types and affordability, speaks that it's already in line with where the province has updated their own EPS to reflect that. Next slide, please. And then I've I've mentioned that your zoning bylaw is really your your where the rubber meets the road, where it's applicable law at the municipal level that all of the orderly development of a property takes place. So what can you do on that property? What are the setbacks that must be met? What are the maximum lot coverage? How many buildings can you have on there? Things like that, accessory structures, all of that's through your zoning bylaw. I'm not sure locally how your zoning bylaw is enforced, I don't think you have a zoning bylaw officer, I imagine it's through your CPO.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's that's the case in municipalities, next slide, please, Trish. So key players in land use planning and how it all works together, we talked ad nauseam about the province, we counsel, council's main objective, main role in this land use planning is to pass policy. Doesn't sound very exciting and it's and yours, your job is to set the framework, the policy to to facilitate development. All right. Planning staff, you don't have planning staff per se, your de facto planning staff is the East Nipissing Planning Board. There's two types of planning staff, you, sorry, I say that at the administrative level, they are your planning staff in terms of the circulation of notices, the preparation of bylaws, all of the requirements under the planning act when you bring forward planning act application. We are your planners of record. So we are there when there is an application and you need a professional opinion. Where do your phone app rent? And that's what Donna and and others uses for. And there's a, there's a disagreement or there's a, this is not cut and dry, we are your your resource for that. The developers and builders are really the ones who who identify opportunities, identify land and and ultimately are the ones who purchase it and try and try and bring forward development applications and development proposals. We are planners of record for Calvin, but there are only two municipalities that we are, we are planners of record for locally. The rest of the time, we are on the other side, the developer builder side, right? So our, one of our largest clients is the DeGani Group at Talik in North Bay. And so we we are very familiar with their process for developing. What they do is they identify lands that are are have a high potential for development, we do an assessment of those to see are they truly, are there any natural heritage features that would, are there soil issues or rock or those types of things and you bring that forward, then they make a decision as to whether or not they wish to purchase and and move forward with development applications on that. But in that context, it's really driven by by profit. And to be fair, right, no one's going to develop land and construct houses if they can't turn profit on it, I think that's anyone in this room would understand that. Public and state, community stakeholder involvement, there are key players in the land use planning as well, there's people here tonight, it's a public process that's under the planning act. All all applications for development must be circulated under the terms of planning act and you have a public meeting. Or or more than one public meeting depending on the the case. And that's their role to have their voice heard. And then, of course, First Nations consultation, if it's required, depending on where the application is. And the Ontario Land Tribunal is the last resort if there is a decision of council that an applicant does not agree with or it's denied and they they wish to pursue that, they can, and vice versa, council can, you know, certainly appeal something to the OLT, even if it's a planning board decision. Okay. So I, so as I said, roll a council, set policy goals and establish community will and direction. Where does the community, what does the community want? You hear it all the time in the streets and in coffee shops and and from your neighbors, this is what we want, there are communities that want to grow, there are those that don't. There are those that want, you know, a a high bank jobs and factories and there's those that want tourism. So it's really the will of your community that you listen to as counselors and then you set the goals and establish community will and direction, which should be fully fed into your official plan process. Okay? And then again, that's to be consistent with PPS and any other provincial plans, that's a requirement of that. And then decisions to contrary to staff planner recommendation require council to provide planning justification for a decision of third party, so what I only threw this on there and I don't want to derail any of the conversation, but if if I only threw this on there and I don't want to derail any of the conversation, but if, if. Um, your staff contact us and they ask for a planning opinion. And we give a planning opinion. And you can choose to, to, to accept that planning opinion or not. Right? You can decide as council, I, I know that's what the planning act says, or I know that's what our official plan says, but. I just don't like it. I, I disagree. That is your prerogative, you are the approval authority. If someone, uh, appeals that. We as your planners of record cannot represent you. Right? You have to hire outside council to go to an Ontario Land Tribunal. To defend your action. Because it's contrary to what your planners of record have said. So we're always going to tell you. The truth and what the act says, and it's just, it's for your. Part of what Donna said was making sure that everyone understands the process. I wanted to mention that because it has happened in other municipalities. So. Well, something considered. Next slide, please. What does the staff do? They implement councils approved policy and goals, they profess professional advice and recommendations, they're your frontline people at the counter. Answering all the questions. Planning Act required a public meeting prior to action on most planning decisions. Uh, process is to be open to the public, process is to be transparent at all stages. All views to be heard and considered, legislation sets the ground rules, that's the part about who gets circulated. How large the circulation area is. How many days they get circulated before the meeting, all of those things are contained within the Planning Act and the official. And the ORX that go along with it. And more than one meeting may be held where necessary, if you, if you haven't come to a consensus or a decision, you can defer. Next slide, please, Trish. The role of the East Nipissing Planning Board, I think we've established that, they are your administrative role. Now, they are supposed to, and, and I know some councillors here sit on that board. They are supposed to have an opinion, uh, of the conformity of an application to the official plan. That's usually done through a planning report. It's usually done through some sort of analysis that's, that's. That's provided to you as, uh, council. As member municipalities and also to the members who are on the planning board. How does this fit with the official plan? Is it in conformity with the plan? Is it consistent with provincial policy? Some of those basic questions. Um, the levy that you are charged by the planning board. Um, should include some professional analysis of that. Uh, last one, roles of the public, we've talked about this. They, they are here, they provide input, they comment, they express their goals and aspirations for the community. And at the end of the day, if they don't like your decisions, they have the rights under. Under the act to field those decisions to the Ontario Land Tribe, you know, if they're unsatisfied. Uh. That's pretty much all I wanted to talk about in terms of the roles and responsibilities of the different levels. Uh, and I hope it helped to clarify a little bit of that, and then I'm happy to answer. I know some of the questions were submitted and I appreciate that in advance. I'll, I'll stick to my swim lane and answer the ones that I can, and as best I can.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Great presentation and very enlightening. Um, I have a whole bunch of notes that I have to follow along.
Okay, certainly.
Uh, Trish, go through some of the, uh, submitted questions.
Okay, I have a question, the mayor of. Many people operate home-based businesses, but some may wish to change to a commercial designation. What is the difference between a home-based business in a rural residential zoning location? And a commercial business within a commercial zoning? Is it difficult to zone change?
Thanks for the question, Mayor Gold. This, I'm going to answer this with two hats, one with the planning and one with impact. Uh, even though I don't work there anymore, I know how they operate. Uh. Impact does not view home-based business as commercial. So, the, the, the reason for rezoning a home-based business to commercial. Would simply be for your township purposes and what I'm, municipal purposes. What I mean by that is. Maybe there's an opportunity to identify them, help them grow to a certain point where. They're no longer a home-based business and they're ready to expand and, you know, into a more commercial building or something like that. Um, and also to make sure about compatibility of that business with the existing residents, right? So, some of those provincial things that we looked at. And one of them that's not on there was the D-series guidelines that are provided by the ministry. So, things like operating a body shop out of an accessory structure. Uh, in a rural residential area. There are provincial rules about that you can, you can turn to, to, that cannot be permitted, right? And they're also within your implementing zoning bylaw. So, home-based business where someone's, uh, I don't know, sewing, giving piano lessons, uh. Doing something that's, you know, contained within the house and there's no. Noise, odor, vibration, hours of operation that affect anyone else's enjoyment. Perfectly within their rights and most municipalities recognize that, and that you put a small. Blackboard or sign on the property and away you go. Um, the, in terms of rezoning to a commercial use, that's. That's where you really are making the leap from that home-based business to a true commercial operation, right? It's no longer appropriate to have it operating in the home. Um, I know in the city of North Bay, we had specific rules as to when that would happen. So, if you had more than, uh, two employees, or you had, or you had yourself and an employee and you just hired a second one. That's it. Now you're operating out of your home, that sort of thing, right? So you can implement that through the zoning bylaw when it's appropriate to no longer be a home-based business. So, you do have that control. And passing some of those rules. I, I don't know if I answered that specifically.
Yeah, you did. I mean, I, I know we had a. Very famous Ruby store in the middle of, and it was so commercial and, and it, to me. Looked as much as any other home-based business because. They lived in the, the same house and they had a store and it was only. The one person who came and dealt with customers. So I, I wondered what designated that to become. Commercial, whereas other places that are similar are rural residential.
Yeah, it's really down to your zoning bylaw. Do you have a commercial tax class?
We do, yes.
So there may be reasons that, that, um. Uh, if it's appropriate to rezone it for a commercial use and then, and then I would then in turn. Assess that differently, or may, may assess that differently depending on, thank you, zoning in effect.
Great, thank you.
Okay. So, second question, again from Mayor Gold. Agricultural zones have different regulations compared to residential zones due to the nature of farming activities and land use. How does this apply to Calvin? And can you walk us through a process of someone applying for a zoning change on one of these zones?
Yeah, there was, um, there's two different parts to that. The. I think what you're going, and, and I won't put words in your mouth, Mayor Gold, but. There's prime ag lands that are identified by the province. To my knowledge, there are no prime, prime ag lands within a municipality, right?
That's correct.
So, you could go through, um, a rezoning of, of an agricultural property. If it's, if it's meeting a number of tests. Uh, that's probably one where your planners of record would get involved. Uh, quite frankly, there are things like minimum distance separation reports that you have to do, so literally. Uh, speak of manure and the smell and, you know, and. You can't impede someone's ability from, to use an agricultural operation that's been. Been operating or, or could operate. To build some houses beside it, right? So there's a lot of rules like that, um. That would have to be looked at before you could do changes. However, just before we became planners of record for Calvin, I think we were the last ones to create a lot. In Calvin, it was for, uh, a young woman whose parents had a farm. And they carved off a lot for them and they moved up from Southern Ontario and they were building a home. So, the answer is twofold. Yes, you can do it and not, not every situation is the same. It depends on the number of factors and criteria. Um, that we do on a case by case basis when somebody's looking at doing that.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. On our township website, it states that a resident may contact the Secretary of the East Nipissing Planning Board. For a one-time pre-consult to ensure the application for their severance would meet compliance. However, in some municipalities, for example, Peterborough, they have a free severance proposal form. This would give those municipalities statistics on how many people are considering severances. And it would make the process more transparent. Would this be a good practice to initiate?
I thought this was a great suggestion. Um, it would go to the planning board.
Yes.
Not here, right? Um, as their, as the administrators, because what they do. Or someone does, I'm assuming it's, it's Joanne as the administrator. They get that, they check it against their rules, right? And does it, does it comply? Is it consistent with provincial policy? Is it, is it, does it. Apply to our official plan and our rules within that. Um, and then kind of look at it from that context, so. Um, anything that you can do to provide additional information while they're doing that review is ultimately going to save everybody time. Save everybody money, save help in the process, all of that. So, not a bad idea. I know in larger municipalities, they do the same process through pre-consultation. Like in, in North Bay, they have what's called a development application review team. Every two weeks, all the departments sit around and review. Applications, whether it's for a subdivision or shopping mall or whatever it is. So, um, yeah, I think. You know, there's, there's, what's the old saying, there's no new ideas, you're just, you're boring ones.
Boring ones.
That work from other municipalities, it worked well. I don't see any harm in doing something like that. You could certainly have a checklist or a very quick kind of, you know.
Pre-consultation.
Pre-consultation form, yeah.
Yeah.
This is what I want to do, this is where I live, this is what I want to. And that would give Joanne some of the tools she needs to.
To do that pre-consultation ahead of time and maybe give us some, some statistics as to how many. Cause there are people that may want to apply and.
Yeah.
But this would tell you how many people are actually actively looking.
Yeah, the, uh, and I wanted to, without, um, undermining the role of the East Nipissing Planning Board. There may be situations, uh, that councillors and politicians get where, oh, they turned down my application. And there, you may want to understand why that is, or, or ultimately, you know, um. Support or tweet that, and to your point, if you don't know which ones never made it to your, to your planning board.
Right.
You can't really offer any assistance, so.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay. So this one comes from councillor Manson. If a resident had a hundred acre property and wanted to retain a portion with their home. On it to live in, but wanted to sever the half of the property. What would be step-by-step process and the resident would need to follow? And what would be associated cost along the way?
Okay. Uh, certainly what would happen is that you would make an application, again. Maybe a pre-consultation, depending on if the form's in place, but an application in the East Nipissing Planning Board to, for severance, right? Ideally, they are hiring someone, uh. Like Tulok, obviously not us in this case, because we could do both for you. But a firm or representative or land use planner that's doing that for them. Uh, but they certainly can do it themselves too. Um, there are sketch requirements that they have to meet, it's all on the application form. So they submit their application along with the fee and with a sketch. That application once deemed complete by, by Joanne. She has to deem that complete and sometimes they go back and forth many times until it is a complete application. When it's deemed complete, they are required under the Planning Act to circulate that within thirty days. You have a meeting set for the, uh, East Nipissing Planning Board. And at that meeting, that file is brought forward for your consideration. And that's where I spoke earlier with Mayor Gold about, there should be some sort of planning analysis at that point to say. This is in conformity, this is consistent, this is good planning.
Right.
By someone, whoever that is. Uh, yeah, and then that helps you inform your decision and, uh, and then they are. Approved at that point, if they are approved, uh, by the approval authority, which is ultimately you. So the planning board makes a recommendation, comes back to you. We're good to go, we, we think this is a good application, we think it's consistent. Recommend approval. If it's proved, you have conditions attached to that approval. Most of them are standard conditions. Do it, give us a survey. A lot of times in municipal, uh. Small municipalities, the road doesn't go where it was supposed to, so. That part of that survey could be creating parts for where the road actually went to turnover to the municipality, that's standard. Kind of condition. There could be other conditions, um. Uh, implemented at the planning boards or, you know, amended by council. And then you have two years from the passing of that to meet the conditions of consent. Alright? So, to sever property in Ontario, you need two things. You need the approval authority, which is the certificate of consent. And you need a survey that's registered on title. Those are really the two things. The other conditions can be applied. Let's say it's, you need approval from the MTO. Or, you know, you need to put something on title because there's a transcanal pipeline through there, whatever it is. Those types of conditions are standard conditions that come up. It could then be things like identifying appropriate driveway locations, can it be accessed? Those are some of the conditions that you want.
Can I just interrupt about the process for a second? So once the planning board makes that. Recommendation to council, which we always have two members sitting there, so they're familiar with that application. We receive those conditions, then we would bring that to council, council would discuss it, then we post it. You know, it's a thirty day turnaround and the two years goes, can go by before they meet conditions. And they're meeting conditions with us at the local level, at the municipal office. So they come back to us, not Joanne, having met their conditions. So they would provide us with the three copies of their survey. The, you know, nine-one-one access, anything that. That North Bay Madwall Conservation Authority permit, the building permit, anything of those conditions that the planning board will make a recommendation back to council. And if council had additional ones, you can't remove any, because it's always provincial policy statement or going back to our. Our zoning and official plan. So you can't remove anything, but you can add additional requirements. But we then are responsible to then notify the planning board when they've met the conditions so that then they can release.
So there are the councillors that, who sit on the, uh, planning board and thank, thank you Donna, that's a comprehensive review sheet, right? You should do that at the planning board, right? In terms of those conditions, like if you want conditions amended as. As per, that's the place to do it, so you don't run into this whole scenario. Now, there are times where things come out as you're going through the process, through in two years, where it's required to add a condition, uh, something. That's appropriate. That can certainly be done, but there's a process to go back to the planning board. I think it's important to remember that they are your administrative arm of the approval authority.
Right?
And your staff.
Yep, and of your staff. They're there to assist and they're there to make recommendation to council so that you all. Can feel good that this is consistent with provincial policy and in line with our official plan before you make a decision and approve it.
One more to that, I know the council has had questions about this, but the five percent in your parkland dedication.
Yes.
Speak to that, it's one or the other and why we don't have parkland dedication, we have five percent in the area.
Yep, it's clearly completely open to council discretion as to what you want to do. The Planning Act speaks to your love up to five percent. Um, we have traditionally calculated that as the value of the land the day before a planning approval. So, if you got a, a rural subdivision that had twenty-five lots on there. The value of that land is the day before it, it got that approval. So you get five percent of that traditionally, if that helps. Okay, and that's usually on impact's assessed value. It's not a goal of mine, the idea of that is to put it into some sort of fund that's, that eventually is for a park. Or some sort of central facility or upgrading, you know, it could be new rig boards, or a rig, it could be anything. That's at council's discretion, but that's really what it's for. Um. So that's.
Yeah, it's in a separate bank account and it's held in reserve for the purpose of parkland restoration. When building subdivisions, if I could interrupt a second, when you're building a subdivision, that five percent in your parkland. Could very well go toward building a park in that subdivision area or building some other community amenities. So that five percent in the area of parkland dedication, so it's either you can give the land or you can give the five percent. Dollar value, but it is for parkland or for any sort of thing, it's dedicated reserves, a separate bank account. That's not touched unless considered.
A lot of municipalities, they pass through their parks plan. Identify where they might want future parks. And the real reason to do that is that then that helps, um, direct a decision, do we just want five percent cashier? Or do we want a piece here that would help for a future park, this is a great location for one or whatever? Sometimes it's your discretion, then it's your decision. Um, where. Um, where municipalities have traditionally got themselves, you know, I won't say in trouble, but sometimes they, it's fifty years later, we're never putting a park there and they try and sell it. Right? That was not, that was taken as parkland dedication. You can't do it that way. That, under the act, you're supposed to offer it back to the
Original.
The original owner.
I, I do have one quick clarification question, just because I don't understand this entirely. But in his question, if somebody has a hundred acre lot and that's the hundred acre lot.
Yeah.
And they're going to sever off, which is on a road allowance.
Yeah.
A small corner for a, a separate dwelling.
Yeah.
You said that one of the requirements is it must have a survey. A lot of the lots in Calvin, the hundred acre lots have never been ser- surveyed, a lot of them, because they're all the, you know, traditional, uh, lots.
Original hundred acre parcels.
Right. So does the whole hundred acres have to be surveyed or just the five acre section?
The answer to that is if someone wants to spend the money to survey the rest, they certainly could. There are reasons that individual property owners want to do that occasionally, but the answer is no. We, we traditionally just sever the, uh, um, survey the severed portion and the remainder is described as the retained, right?
Right.
Of the part, property. And thank you, I got off track on there, but the severance on a hundred acres of, of land, we look at that. It has to meet your minimum requirements, which are two acres and thirty meters of frontage on a municipally maintained road.
Right.
Down that road, part of the pond before. It has to be on a municipally maintained road, at least that frontage and at least that area. And then you can move forward with potentially severance, uh, applying for a consent.
We've noticed a couple of severance application or questions come in where, uh, people own a hundred acres on a provincial highway.
Yes.
And they, they're looking at a severance and the very first objection that comes up is that they can't get an entrance permit off the highway. That seems to happen quite often.
That's exactly right. When the, the province, again, going back to their slides, municipalities exist at the women of the province.
Right.
MTO is not, has very specific rules on how many entrances are allowed. Depending on the class of highway, the speed of highway, the number of lanes, all of that within a kilometer. They're, they have specific rules on how many entrances they can grant. And quite frankly, for reasons that are obvious, they don't want to grant any. They'd like to have it like a, like a
Highway.
A highway, a bullet train and, you know, that's, that's, there's nobody slowing down and turning and ingressing aggressive now. There are existing lots of record that they cannot take away the access from that are, right? But they don't have to grant new ones. It's fully within their preview or view. So we, uh, in our world, there's a free portal and this is good information for your, for your citizens. The MTO has a free portal that you can go and, and, um, make your request for, for an entrance. And they'll, they'll give you an answer. I, I live here. I want to sever off this. Draw up a little sketch. This is what I'm proposing to do. And you submit that through the portal and they'll, they'll give you a formal response.
Great. Thank you very much.
It's Steve in that, uh, question. And thank you very much for your, your insights there. Um, from a assumption of cost standpoint, what's, uh, you know, in that scenario, we're out here doing a hundred acres, turning it into fifty.
Yeah.
Um, what's the survey generally cost these?
A good question and I, I purposely skipped over it because the answers, they're all different. Uh, it's really, really, it gets down to the survey evidence that is in place. So, uh, if you're, if you've got two properties like this and there's bogs in the ground and they're easy to locate and they're, and, you know, you have good data to go off of, it's cheaper. If you have to go two concessions over to find the last survey evidence and, you know, or cut a significant line to be able to do that, it's much more expensive. So the answer is it could be as low as, uh, you know, six thousand dollars and I've seen surveys that are sixty thousand dollars. It's, it depends on, on that. So what happens is any of the local survey companies will quote that for you and, and for people considering doing the severance, that would, I'd start with that. Right? What is it the survey going to cost me prior to making any sort of application? The rest of the process is the application fee to the, the East Nipissing Planning Board, fifteen hundred?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred? Eight hundred and, um, then your legal fees and your, you know, your planning fees. Typically, typically a standard consent is somewhere to get everything done between ten and fifteen thousand dollars.
And that's not a cost that we can say don't pay. The only thing that we could say is that we want to, East Nipissing Planning Board could decide not to charge a fee. But as far as getting the survey, that's a requirement in the provincial policy.
The, the, the two, I, I'll go back to, you need two things. You need approval authority and you need a, you need a survey. Okay? Those are the two things in Ontario that create a parcel. The approval authority can charge whatever they want. I've seen fees across the board from a hundred and fifty bucks to, to three thousand dollars for an application fee. I think it's important to keep in mind that the planning board incurs costs to do that, right? And it's not just the mailing cost. It's not, there's a, there's a meeting. There's the administration costs. There's all of that, uh, that they're supposed to be doing. Um, so, in, in defense of them, I, I've been planning a record for the, uh, the North O'Maglin Planning Board. And I know their margins are pretty thin. They don't make a lot of money. If they're doing cost recovery, they're doing all right. So it's, especially if you get into a situation where there's a tricky file and it takes a while and you have to have maybe multiple meetings. Well, some, one or two of those can blow the annual budget for a whole planning board. So they have to recover something.
Just to support what you're saying, I know in our planning board meetings, it's not just a matter of looking at the, the application and approving it or not approving it. Contact the MTO for, uh, uh, roads, entrance stuff. We contact the
Conservation.
Conservation Authority for wetlands. We contact Ministry of Natural Resources for, and there's a whole bunch of things there, energy mines and resources. And all of those ha- have to be submitted and adjudicated before approved.
And I can tell you, Mayor, uh, it's getting more and more complicated. It's, there are no easy applications, right?
Yeah.
Um, that's what we do in our daily work when we're not doing planner record work for municipalities. We're on that side doing that and it's very complicated. And it's very, um, uh, time intensive. So to answer your question, yeah, you could eliminate those fees, but someone's got to pay those, the, the time and then I believe you do that through a contract with the East Nipissing Planning Board. Thank you for the most part from the administration and processing side, you get good value for your money on that.
Thank you.
Senator, your question? Just to clarify, uh, Steve, on the cost, did you say ten to fifteen thousand for straight eagle?
No, total. That would be your survey, your application fees, your legal work. That's a pretty standard mean, median, okay? They can be lower, they can be higher. It depends again. Not, there's not a, a set for each one. So my advice is if somebody's considering severing, you know what the fixed costs are for the application and the legal work for better or for worse. The, the real difference is on the survey costs. So you call a surveyor, you get a you know, the idea of they'll put a proposal together or vote together. Don't perfect, don't go get the survey work done until you have that approval. It's a condition approval. But at least citizens will know what it, what they can expect to pay for it, for survey. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Last question. If a resident had a hundred acre property and wanted to develop it with multiple homes, can you please outline step-by-step process that the resident would follow, should they be able to partner with a builder? Please outline a simple and likely scenario that would be appropriate for a Calvin resident to make some basic assumptions about it.
Those, that's a much longer answer. The province has passed legislation that says you can have more than one dwelling on a property, right? A lot of the official plans and the zoning bylaws have not caught up to that yet because it just happened in October. Okay, so, so, municipalities are operating on the rules which they know under the official plan under the zoning bylaw. The province is saying that you can have additional dwellings, but there's specific rules about rural area, which this is. Um, and so the short answer to that is, um, you could build a, potentially you could build a second dwelling unit onto a property. But it's important for people to understand, you can't sever it. Right? Like that, those two buildings, those two houses are bound to one piece of land. So backing up to the previous question that you asked councillor, you could sever and then get a building permit on a new parcel, right? Uh, but if you're talking about an additional dwelling unit onto an existing property, um, it's important for people to understand, you can't separately convey that. And sometimes if you go and do that and you try and sever it after the fact, you run into all kinds of problems, right? Whether it's frontage, whether it's natural heritage features, whether it's something that's preventing you from severing it. So, my, as a planner, my, my personal choice is if that's your intent, sever it first, get your building permit on a separate parcel and you're free and clear and it's free title. Um, can you build a separate, separate dwelling? I'm not familiar, maybe Anne knows already. Can you do a second one? Do you have your ADU policies updated?
Uh, yes. So here in the township of Calvin, they are all in the zoning bylaw already.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's just whether you would have to meet the building code of requirements. Um, however, I don't know if councillor Manson may be of anything about a planned subdivision.
Okay. How do you do a planned subdivision?
Kind of giggled, yeah.
That, that was kind of the nature of the question. What if you said have a hundred acres and I just wanted partner with the developer to see if they can, you know, build a few houses on there. So not necessarily adding another house. And I can definitely see the, some pitfalls in that as well.
So.
Thank you.
Um, I'm not sure if you're delegated subdivision authority, approval authority. I'll have to check that. We'll check that out. Let's just assume that you do have, because it's a different thing improving subdivisions. Not every municipality has the right to, to prove them, okay? So we'll take that under advisement. We'll get back to you and check your, your, uh, rules on that. Um, in that scenario, you would enter into a subdividers agreement with the municipality. So let's use, everybody probably is familiar with, say, tread lightly in the East Ferris. You, the developer is responsible for putting in the road to municipal standard, right? And that includes paving, uh, ditching, streetlights if necessary, if it's the oil council, whatever it is. They do that through a subdividers agreement, right? And then you take security to make sure that the road's built to that standard. And then they can subdivide. They still have to meet the frontage requirements, the lot area requirements. And when you're on private services, the minimum for that is point eight hectares to safely, under the ministry guidelines, safely create a lot with a well and a septic on the property. The more you have of those in a certain area, the, the, the more challenging it can be from a, from a, um, building perspective. Other rules, the Planning Act talks about if you're going to create five or more lots, you have to do a hydro geological study. And what a hydro geological study is, and we're, we're going off track here, but you take, you draw water from, you drill wells in the corner of the property and you do testing both quantity and quality to make sure one, that it can be supplied with potable water. And it's a quality that can support people living there. And secondly, that you're not drawing down the well of a neighboring property. Right? Or, or impacting the aquifer in a way that would be detrimental for people who are already there. So a planned subdivision is a whole different end and it's, um, only typically larger companies do it. Uh, it's, it's not, it's not the same as a consent where you're carving off a lot for the kids. A planned subdivision is much bigger. And very, um, funding intensive. There's a number of studies that have to be done as part of that. Your public works people have to get involved. There's a cost estimates and security and all the things that, that go on that.
And so Steve, that work is done by the builder, though, not by the municipality, at their cost and before they typically come to us, correct?
Yeah, the, um, the role of council on that is to, to review, make sure that you're protecting the public interest and you have enough security that if they walk away from the project, you can either finish it or, or tear it up and, and, uh, return it to its natural state of that's really, you're protecting the public good there. You're not, you're not on the role of the developer side or you're on the role of citizens, which is let's make a good decision on allowing the subdivision to go forward. Let's take the proven rate security to make sure that it's built and built properly. And then when it is, you give that security back to the developer through a subdividers agreement and off you go.
And so to add, bylaw twenty seventeen oh one five happens to be in your package tonight for another reason. And it does outline some of those requirements in the subdivision and what they do to, they provide to councils.
My, my experience in this area councillor is that developers will seek out lands that are ready to develop. Whether they are privately owned, publicly owned, doesn't matter. And where they, they face the path, least path of resistance in terms of, not in terms of policy or public, uh, objection, but more the ease of developing them, right? Sandy soils, no natural heritage features, no provincially significant wetlands, no bird migration routes, whatever it is. So it's a very expensive, difficult process on the developer's side. Uh, but they're constantly in that, in that exercise of trying to find opportunities because they're trying to plan to build homes this year, two years, five years, ten years, so.
Can I ask a follow-up to that?
Yeah.
Steve, when I was down at the Roma conference, I was, uh, talking to a number of people about development. And they said developers looking to develop in an area are going to look at, uh, transportation, availability of natural gas, uh, cell phone service, high-speed internet before they even make a decision to go into an area. Is, is that generally your experience as well?
Well, what we've seen is that a lot of, especially since COVID, people coming up from Southern Ontario and the expectation is that they have the same service levels that they did in the South, right? And then come into Calvin and go, where's my high-speed internet? Right? We've seen that over and over and over again. Um, I think all council can do is, is, uh, like from that perspective, is set the policy, um, you know, that, that we, we want to attract some, some housing. But at the end of the day, it's really, really out of your control. It's really, it, is there a market for, for the home builder to build and again, make money? Can they make a profit building a house, providing it to the community in Cal? And, uh, so that, that part is, is really out of your, your control. There's nothing you can do about that. You can certainly put the policy in place and, you know, and say, yep, we're open for business.
With doors, yeah. Hope somebody comes in.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. And that's the last of the questions. We did suspend the procedural bylaw for this presentation. So if anybody in the audience has any questions, remember that it's not about specific applications, but general planning questions. Uh, does anyone have any questions? And if you do, please stand. Your name is, just your first name or?
My name's Daryl.
Hi, Derek.
Is there somebody that a person can actually sit down with, go over all their paperwork and make sure it's done properly before they go ahead? And with all the copies made and the money and?
That is supposed to be the role of the planning board. So you're supposed to be able to do that with, with Joanne Montroy of the planning board where they, uh, check your application. But if you're asking for a review of, can I create a lot there? Like that sort of policy, you know, does it fit or does?
No, I'm just asking if somebody can
The actual paperwork?
I've got my paperwork, make sure it's all done, all the i's are dotted, all the t's are done, everything's done, so.
So the application that we have online and we do have paper copies in the office.
I've got the paper copy.
Okay, we give it to you and it would say there, contact Joanne Montroy to review your application.
Right. I got a older one that doesn't say that on it.
Oh, okay.
The, the paperwork I have is like four or five years.
Oh, yeah. You know what, Daryl, I can go grab anyone before you leave. Yeah.
Done with that.
But it does, it's very.
And it says on our website that Joanne is available for a free pre-consultation um, uh, on an application, which means that you could take that paperwork uh, uh, to Joanne to, um, uh, go over it with you just to make sure that you're, uh, again, as we were talking during our meeting, if, if the only access to your property is on highway seventeen, she might warn you that that's going to be problematic, but.
I caught, I caught all that. I'm not worried about.
But I'm saying she, she will go over that as a, a pre-consultation process, free of charge.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anybody else with a question? No? Going once, going twice? Council, any other questions from council? No? Okay. Mr. Aiken, thank you very much for your presentation. It's been very enlightening and, uh, I'm sure we've all learnt a lot, so.
We're, we're your planners of record, certainly, uh, through Donna, uh, or through Ann, if you have We're, we're your platters of record, certainly, uh, through Donna, uh, or through Ann, if you have questions as specific. They, they will generally consolidate those and reach out, so, um, do that and, uh, do our best to serve it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Aiken, please feel free to hear the rest of your evening.
Thank you. Yeah.
McCarty, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, you're on to the environmental.
Just call him Steve, it's easier.
Thank you, councillor. I'm good with that. We're in Calvin.
Where are we spelled councillor with two Ls instead of? Which is good. Where it's, uh, Z not C.
That's great. Yeah.
Just give everyone a second. Take a break.
I'd like to add three more. In, in another life, I assisted a developer in developing a subdivision that were in Ottawa. And they did studies on the readiness of the community. They wanted to know the population who live there, stats can. So as a consultant, I helped them to develop their subdivision and went through all the, all the parts with the municipality. And, and I know that we have one very large developer regionals who also will do studies about the nature of these parts of the community before they go in and decide, including talking to realtors about what properties available and those kinds of things. They want to know more about the population who might come here because they won't build houses unless they're going to sell.
Right.
So they do all of those studies in advance of deciding where, what communities that they want to build in. And in this particular case, um, they didn't go with the first two communities. They went with the third after doing, incurring all the costs of the studies, you know, the studies.
All right, so, uh, um, if I can, uh, the education and training, uh, did I ask for a mover and seconder for that, Chris? No? Okay, so this is the presentation and, uh, we're accepting the, uh, presentation is presented. Could I have a mover or a seconder? Councillor Morton and Councillor Grant. Now therefore be a result of council for the corporation with municipality of Calvin hereby heard and received the education and training from Steve MacArthur, not Steve McCarthy, uh, from Fallica Engineering, Calvin's planner of record in an open information session. All those favor? And the motion is carried. Thank you.
And maybe we can invite Pauline to join the second table.
Yes, Pauline, can you join the second table?
Charted sweet. That's why you're sitting beside me.
Next item on the agenda is, uh, the C E O report on the Calvin representative on the veterinarian services committee. Uh, mover and a seconder, please. Uh, councillor Morton and councillor Manson.
Yes, uh.
So I'm assuming everyone had a chance to read the report about the wonderful work that, uh, Pauline Carmichael did on behalf of Calvin and all of its farming community and how long she's been involved as a volunteer. I do know that that's no short beat Pauline. I was reminded that I don't think you've ever formally been recognized in the community for the work that you do there and how long that, you know, you've been doing that on behalf of farming.
Oh, you're correct. Yeah, that's correct. I have, yeah.
Yeah, and you're very well known in the community for doing that. So I'll leave it to you to explain a little bit more for this council about what, you know, what it is that you do and why you're here tonight.
Okay, I've done a presentation for these guys.
At the very beginning, yes.
John, so John would be the only one that hasn't heard me.
And Don.
And Don, yes. So the, um, the committee that I am secretary treasurer of and Calvin's representative is the uh, East Nipissing North Perry Sound Veterinary Services Committee. So we are, um, put, uh, there in place to make sure I have large animal veterinary services through our, our area. So we are the committee, we report to the body that is the PAN, the Northern uh, Producer, uh, sorry, Northern Producer Animal Health Network. And then, uh, the PAN reports to the M M D M that, uh, these vets that we choose, um, to do their services. So it's been around for a long time, the vet, the veterinary assistant program, it's been around for a long time. Our committee was the very first forum in nineteen fifty eight, I believe, when Jack Smiley decided he would like to, uh, have a, um, his vet clinic in North Bay. So we had Doc Smiley, we had Dr. Curran and Hawson, and they were the first ones. They received money through the Ministry of Agriculture and Food to set up a clinic that was a mixed clinic, large animal and small animal, but they had to say that they would sup- uh, supply our large animal, um, services for the area. In nineteen ninety eight, the Ministry of Agriculture and Food was told by the province to cut their, their budget by half. So the Ministry of Agriculture and Food asked the Northern Development, um, guys that they would take over the program because it's mostly in the north that the Vat program is. Um, so they've been administering it ever since. The, the budget hasn't changed for years. It's eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And we have twenty vet committees right from Thunder Bay and we're the first, furthest east and uh, first, furthest west of Thunder Bay. And we go down, uh, Ranford has two, two, um, vet committees down there. We have one in Hellburton and they don't have, uh, vet, but they still keep involved. And Cochran has a really hard time getting a vet up there. Uh, but they have, uh, services from Twisman that goes up, but not for emergency, just for medication and for herd health. Um, our biggest share of problem in all of North America is the shortage of vets. And I'll say vets because even small animal vets, they're having problems maintaining small animal vets. But large animal vets, we have a real big lack. Just even Springer, last year we had four vets in Springer and two of those vets, they were new ones. And as of, uh, January, those two new ones left, they went back down to Southern Ontario. And so now we're down to two vets. And, uh, there's no other large animal vets in the area, just Springer. Uh, and they service all the way to Sudbury, West Sudbury, down to Noelville. They service right up Madwa and down to Trope Creek for us. So they have very large area. They're in Calvin Township every Thursday for herd health. And, uh, Washington, I think, Thursday mostly. Tuesday, they do their herd health out in West Nipissing. Um, any other calls during the week, they'll go inward, hopefully. Um, so sometimes you're on the phone with them when you have a problem cabbying and they're down in Noelville cabbing or lambing. So I've had interesting phone calls with them on the phone. Arm up yours. What am I doing right? Yeah, so, um, yeah, I've been doing this for a long time and, uh, hopefully continue doing it for a long time. Well, I mean, not a long time, I have. But a few more years anyway. Um, you saw the letter also?
Yeah, they didn't have it.
Um, I don't know, you want to ask questions? I'm good at asking questions.
You know, it's funny you should say that, that there's not many vets left. We used to, uh, uh, have Ron Schweitzer. He would come out to our farm when we had a farm and take care of cows, horses, and he would come and do house calls all the time. I guess they, you know, just transitioned into being a small animal.
Yeah, he, so he was with Jack Smiley for twenty.
Right, and when he came out to see us.
Probably five years he was with Jack Smiley. Then he went on his own and he only lasted two years.
Doing the large animal.
Doing large animal when he had his own clinic with small animals and large animals.
So you found.
One of the problems is that, uh, he had a couple of bad acts and one at my place.
Oh.
With cow.
Oh.
And, um, and then, uh, so that sort of put him off. Being a large animal vet by himself in his clinic with no backup. That was.
So now if we still had a farm, which we don't, um, and we needed veterinarian services, the nearest would be Springer Township.
Yeah.
And that's what your organization sort of facilitates is making sure that that coverage is there for the existing farmers, is that correct?
So when Jack Smiley retired, he retired very suddenly, um, it was coming on, but nobody really noticed it. It was, he was getting Alzheimer's. So he was driving to Madwa one night and he got lost. And the, he was standing outside his car out in Patnau Township. And the O P P come by and asked them if there was something wrong. And they phoned his wife and, um, they had to come and pick him up because he didn't remember where he was. So I got a phone call from clinic saying we're, um, getting, uh, he had a, uh, guy that he trained for years. And he said, well, he would help, he would drive Jack. So that lasted only for a couple of months. And then, um, because he was no longer a large animal vet, the guy that was driving him, he wasn't allowed to do the large animal business. You have to have special rec- uh, recognition to be a large animal vet. And a mobile large, large animal vet is different than one that is only in a clinic. Um, so this guy didn't have proper, uh, recommendations from the veterinary college. So he couldn't take over, um, from Jack. So we started having to scramble around. And so we wind and done, we advertised there's special places you could advertise for vets. We advertised and, and there's three vets came in. But because there was no clinic and I approached several clinics in North Bay and none of them wanted a large animal vet working out of their clinic. None of them. And Ron had stopped. Um, Greg, Greg Stethen had committed suicide, so we had nobody. There was the two large animal vets. They were in the Perry Sound area. They didn't want to take on any objects, um, clients at all. So we couldn't find one. So we were two years without a vet. We could get medicine, but no emergency calls. We could get medicine only from the vets then, so.
So what you're doing now is making sure that there is coverage for farmers in Calvin.
Yeah, so Springer said to us, we'll pick up your area because they wanted to bring another vet in and they needed more clients. So luckily they've continued being able to keep more vets to serve the area. But otherwise if Springer ever quit, I don't know where we're gonna be.
Well, we need you to stay there and keep finding people. And I, I, you know, I have heard that, uh, you know, your volunteer efforts have been acknowledged. You're great at doing this and we really appreciate, you know, what you, what you've been doing.
No, I, I, this is the one thing I don't mind doing, that's for sure.
If, if, if I can move forward.
Yeah, and I just want to mention when I said recognizing you, I didn't mean by this council. I meant as a volunteer service award, but typically the council would nominate you for on an annual basis. That's a provincially recognized award. So that's what I meant, not that this council didn't recognize you. I would recognize that formally. I think that's long overdue.
We don't need things like that, no.
Well, listen, uh, I, I'm all in favor of moving forward. Uh, uh, are there any questions, comments from council?
I'm surprised that she, uh, asked to be agreed. I thought she always was.
Well, she is.
But I, I guess there's nothing official. Donna couldn't find an official.
Oh, okay. Well, it's official to.
I invited her to come to council and we could make it official. She wanted to be reappointed. So I said, yeah, let's bring you to council and maybe that happened.
Well, then, uh, I'll just, uh, read this motion if I may, that council for the municipality and corporation of Calvin Township receives the C E O's report. Um, uh, and the Cal- Calvin representative on the veterinary services committee of the Northern Producer Animal Health Network, the N P H, excuse me. Please forgive me for the coughs. This is not a cold. It, it, it's simple, so. Anyway, a supplement by an in-person verbal report by Pauline Carmichael and that it supports the reappointment of Pauline Carmichael as the area rep- area's representative on the veterinary service committee of the.
I can finish this. Of the Northern Producer Animal Health Network. Therefore, be resolved that council for the corporation of the municipality of Calvin accepts the report entitled C E O twelve dash twenty twenty five and supports the reappointment of Pauline Carmichael as the area's representative on the veterinary services committee of the Northern Producer Animal Health Network.
All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. And thank you very much for, uh, coming out tonight, Pauline, and, uh, we certainly appreciate all of, all the work you do from the area.
And if anybody ever phones, if, yeah, pass on my phone number because I'm always willing to answer any of the questions from the producers around.
Perfect. Thank you very much. We won't, we won't say it out loud in an open meeting that's recorded, but we'll certainly pass it on to council. I'll have.
If I can say just one little comment, when I moved to Calvin, uh, four years ago, uh, Pauline was a wealth of knowledge. I have so many questions, community, and you were super helpful. I remember every week I'd have a couple of questions for Pauline. From what's the speed limit out here to, uh, you know, can I shoot my gun in my backyard? She got all the answers, so it's great.
She did ask me that, didn't she? It's all a country.
Well, thank you very much, Pauline. Thank you. Uh, we'll move on to item eight point three, C E O report, Northeastern Fire Education Conference, Tray Joe.
Okay, I'll be going, yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, so I did put together one page of some supporting documentation about what the fire marshals office did bring to my attention about, uh, doing a conference that's held for firefighters at, uh, northeastern Ontario level, going up to and including Muskogus. Um, is a, is a conference that's held March twenty seventh to thirtieth. Within the conference is one day dedicated to municipal councils and senior staff. Where all they talk about, all we talk about is the benefits of councils knowing more about, and I put the agenda forward to you. So there's a cost to attending and I'm suggesting that, um, one, at least one council member. So that you can gain better appreciation of what the establishing bylaw on fire is, work of training, you've heard me talk about this for a number of months now. The training requirements or reporting requirements, what are establishing bylaw really does mean from a fire, uh, perspective and to council? The obligatory responsibility legally that you are, um, responsible for with that, that established in fire law. There's a cost to attend and you were assigned one council member. It would be six hundred dollars estimate that includes travel. I don't anticipate unless whoever is going didn't want to drive up early in the morning because it's in Huntsville and the conference starts with nine, registration starts at eight. Uh, I think it would be very beneficial to this council if, uh, a member who's not in, uh, part of the fire hall does attend that session to learn more about it. But this day that's meant for you to attend, one or more council members.
If I can ask for a mover and a seconder to discuss the item, councillor Morton and councillor Manson. Um, discussion leads to you, councillor Morton.
I think, uh, if you're available, that'd be good for you to attend this, uh, give you an insight of what some of the municipal. Municipal requirements of a fire department.
Are you referring to me?
Yes.
Okay.
But there is a course, an online course you can take, municipal. Information per for. Very, the operations of firefighters for municipal officials. Which I took.
Let me talk for you too.
But I took the course online when I first got elected.
I would be interested in going to the course. And I would put my name down as as a counselor going if that's agreeable to council. However. Uh it's at the end of the month. It's on the thirtieth and I know I have some testing due. From the hospital, so um I there may be a small chance that I'm. Going to get excluded, so I would like to have an alternate if if it's agreed that I can represent council on this.
It's a Friday.
It's a Friday.
Is it on March thirtieth?
Yeah.
Why is my calendar so many? It's a Sunday.
March twenty eighth. Twenty eighth. It is the twenty. It's the twenty. It says thirtieth in the agenda. It is the twenty.
Oh, March twenty seventh to the thirtieth is the conference. The municipal day is the twentieth. Yep.
And I I would suggest that if I were going, I would drive first thing in the morning. Don't need to stay in a hotel. Huntsville is, what, two hours away? Leave at six in the morning. You're there lots of time. But anyway, uh it's it's secondary.
An alternate and it's just, I I would consider to be, I would consider to be an alternate. I I I'm I'm having a hard time committing right now, just I was like, I have the same problem. I'm not sure my schedule will allow it. But if, you know, if I need to be named as an alternate, I could be. And if it worked out, I could actually go, but maybe we can name. Name our, you know, if council wants to name us, then we can check our schedules before, try to check them before purchase.
And it doesn't mean that only one can go. I mean, as many as I know other councils are sending a couple of council members. And so it's just, it's up to you.
I I'll be willing to put my name down and then I would like to just, well, if it's day or two, just confirm with the office, make sure.
Any other discussion? Go ahead.
Well, we were complaining about spending sixty dollars to send out a circular to the community. And now we're talking about sending, spending twelve hundred dollars for an information session.
Can I clarify my point on that? It was that it's not our material and as Councilor Mattson pointed out, D C I would pay a lot of money. So they should be promoting their own things to our municipality. That was why I mentioned, I do really asking us to.
But it's the same conversation about not putting out a a monthly bulletin or a quarterly bulletin. The cost factor and the impact on the staff. And we're talking about ten times the cost here.
For council to be more aware of what they need to be aware of in a fire department.
Well, we're also, I don't know why she's not here today, but I know she's, uh the chief is probably gonna be trying to get. Funding to go and she's gonna be go for the whole weekend.
Don't know. She didn't tell us.
No, I know what I mean. She's going to the fire hall, so.
All right. Any other questions, comments? As as an alternative or or a second.
I'd like to put my name down and I'd like to just be able to follow up over the next.
So you might go in addition.
Possibly, but I just.
Okay.
If if council supports it, then it just leaves an option so that I can follow up.
All right. So I'll call this to a vote. The council for the corporation municipality of Calvin does hereby receive the C A O report for information purposes. And uh consider the benefits of participating in the twenty twenty five Northeastern Fire Education Conference Trade Show. Municipal track held in Huntsville on uh March twenty eighth uh to to two thousand twenty five. Now therefore be resolved that the council for the corporation municipality of Calvin authorized uh participation of. Mayor Gould. And Dean Grant. Councilor Grant. And the C A O scheduled permitting at the twenty twenty five Northeastern Fire Education Conference and Trade Show on March the twenty eighth. Uh in Huntsville. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Also. Oh, you didn't even put your hand up?
No, I didn't.
Okay, well, then that is carried.
Thank you.
Uh eight point four, C A O report to council. A bylaw to appoint an inspector to investigate complaints under the Residential Tenancy Act. Uh and like mover and a second or please, uh Councilor Morgan and Councilor Latt. The council for the corporation municipality of Calvin has received and discussed the C A O report. Uh I guess we should discuss it then.
Any questions? That's pretty clear.
It's pretty clear.
All right, um no discussion on on the report. All right, now therefore be resolved. That bylaw two thousand and eighteen dash zero one three, a bylaw to appoint a municipal inspector to investigate complaints. Under the Residential Tenancy Act for the Corporation Municipality of Calvin being repealed without replacement. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously.
We don't know that either.
No, actually, we haven't done it. You're right. Uh eight point five, municipality of Calvin uh has, uh this is about the copyrighted bylaws. Uh could I have a mover and a second or please? Oh, yes, you did move it. That's right. Seconder. Uh Councilor Mattson. Um this is a a request to have staff uh redraft any municipal Calvin bylaws that have been copyrighted. Um and uh some bylaws that. Are are on file to be investigated. Uh discussion, please. Well, you you moved it, so Councilor Morgan.
Well, the three reason I put it through is that uh it can't be that many that the previous council. Submitted that were enacted that were copyrighted. Uh then we, this should be done sometime before the end of our term. If only to protect the future counselors who might be inadvertent infringement of this copyright. Basically, we just identify the which ones are and bring it to council and we can either repeal or figure out what the problem is before. Leaving that for future councils to get the. To deal with.
Good. Thank you. Councilor Mattson?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to, uh that's something we've discussed historically and I think it makes a lot of sense to not have that. Copyright constraint on our vows.
Any other comments? Uh I I'd like to comment and 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 I think you're both uh spot on, correct. We we do want to protect future councils from being in a situation where they inadvertently. Make changes to a copyrighted bylaw. Um I'm wondering though about the need to do this right at this point in time. If we want to protect future counselors uh with this particular situation. It may be something that we could do in a year's time rather than.
I said sometime before I end of our term. A year and a half left in our term.
All right. Uh you can, I sort of.
I said during my comments.
At the earliest possible.
No, I didn't. When I submitted it, I said in a timely manner that.
Yeah.
There was no timeframe during our discussions. I said sometime before the end of our term.
Uh I I would be willing to support it if it was uh amended to say before the end of our term. That uh I just don't think it's something that we need to be working on uh within the next couple of months. I think we have a lot of stuff on our plate. And we did look at a and I I would address this question to Councilor Grant. We looked at a couple of the copyrighted bylaws. Uh do you remember, Councilor Grant? We we thought that there wasn't a problem with them in the form that they were in, other than the fact that they were copyrighted. Is that your remembrance?
Um I think it's it's possible. Um these are past discussions, but there is a lot of debate too whether or not you can even copyright a bylaw. Whether or not it's uh.
Oh, I know.
It's even legal. Um it's, I mean, I'm not gonna mince my words, sane.
Right.
Uh to have a public document that's not owned by the public. Uh, right, I mean, you know, the way I just, if I can continue into a comment, you know, the way I read the resolution in front of me. Is that uh the list is gonna be provided. Um I don't see the harm in that. Um and I mean, I I I'm going to support it. Now, whether we rewrite all these bylaws or not, that's a that's another question. But uh, you know, to have a list and maybe there's some low hanging fruit or something, I mean. Uh I would support it the way it's written, in in my opinion. And uh, you know, maybe some can be repealed, but it would be nice to uh, once again, get a refresher of what what's out there. So I don't remember, to be honest.
It's repeal and replace, right? Because you're not just, as you, the error that you did make when you came in was just repealing, which doesn't.
Well, depending on the bylaw, right? Depending on what the bylaw is, because, you know, um we would wanna, we obviously have to replace anything that's statutory. Required by original regulation, but I I don't know. Consideration at a future meeting when this list is provided. And that does, like I said, during my discussion, I said before the end of our term. There's nothing in the resolution that says immediately.
No, I just had your email that said.
In a timely manner.
Timely manner, which could be next week to me or next month.
Oh, yeah. Well, thank you. The fact that we now have a three-person staff and we're going to hear this job, we only had one person staff. You know, like things have calmed down quite a bit in the last two years compared to what it was like.
Could we, uh could I propose an amendment to this? And then the amendment would just be a tag at the very last paragraph that says. Uh prior to the termination of our term, uh of the current council term.
Is it the list of the rewriting that you're looking for?
The list.
Yes, I I would, I would propose the amendment in a sense that I think a list is reasonable. Um I think the rewriting is another story, but um, you know, the way that this reads is we're gonna be provided with a list. In fact, I would argue that it actually, when you read the resolution, actually doesn't even give a date by. And I would argue it probably, you know, probably should, but I think we can get a list in a reasonable period of time.
All right, the the amendment not approved, then I'll call this to a vote unless there's any other questions or comments. Uh the resolution, the current municipality of Calvin council is made with. Redress uh redraft. And bring them as a list before council for further discussion.
You want to add as a list?
Yes.
And I wasn't here during that time, but I know that since I've been here, you have repealed and rewritten a number of them.
Yes.
No, there might not be any.
Well, I know there's one.
Well, I my point is, they were only in there for a couple of years, so how many did they do?
Probably not many. All right, all those in favor of the resolution? So that motion is carried. Thank you. Uh next item on the uh agenda is municipality of Northern Bruce Peninsula Resolution for the consideration of cell towers. And their associated maintenance. Uh mover and a seconder, that was uh brought up by Councilor Morton? No, no.
This one down because I thought it would be something that widely it might know the.
Right. Mover and seconder, please. Mattson, Councilor Mattson and Councilor Morton. Uh council is in receipt of an email correspondence dated February the eleventh. Uh from the municipality of Northern Bruce Peninsula and type of cell towers and their associated maintenance. Whereas the municipality of Northern Peninsula experienced several power outages in the fall of twenty twenty four. Whereas this resulted in the loss of cellular services and create, caused a faulty generator. On the the cell lower site, cell tower site. And the entire Northern Bruce Peninsula had no cellular and or communication services. And whereas installment or complete lack of cellular service and maintenance of cellular. Infrastructure in rural communities creates significant barriers to access emergency services. Negatively affects emergency response time and increase public safety risk. And therefore is resolved that that Canada and the province of Ontario set targets to close gaps. And cell cellular service in rural communities and mandate service providers in partnership with all levels of government. Develop a forty-eight hour maximum maintenance period for repairing of cellular infrastructure. Further, that a copy of this motion be sent to the Federal Department of Innovation, M P Anthony Rota, M P P Vic Fidelli. And Blue Sky Economic Growth. Discussion, questions?
I'm in favor of the uh motion, but um the government is going to force private companies to. You know, to uh have a better maintenance program. How is that going to work? Set to the C R T C or anyways, that's my question. I'm in favor of the motion, though.
Yeah, the C R T C does regulate the amount of service provided by uh communication companies in Canada. And uh they're asking that this legislation be stepped up to. I mean, I, we don't have to support it because we have perfect cell phone service in Calvin Township. It doesn't. So you get to five bars and, you know, five G L P Es, but I I I think it's a good.
And six different providers.
Just to start to say, hey, it's time that there there is some regulatory control over providers.
Well, it's a system that we rely on because the 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 hardwired system no longer exists. So it is a. It is an emergency system.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm in favor, of course. Yeah, it is. It is critical.
Any other questions, comments? None? Well, then I'll call this to a vote. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you very much. Sorry, Anne, we've kept you here all this time.
It's okay.
Item eight point seven, and to present council with the information. Uh to further the inquiry regarding assuming Stewart's Road resolution. Um gonna have mover and a second or play. Oh, I mean, we should make note. And so it is uh uh sorry, seven forty four?
Oh, I had seven forty eight.
Seven forty eight? Yes, seven forty eight. Uh so I need a mover and a second or to discuss this. Hey, Councilor Morton and Councilor Mattson. Do I read the resolution or just go right to Anne's report? Yeah, so Anne, thank you very much for attending tonight.
Hi, you're welcome. Um I presented a report to council as I was directed to provide some monetary values to. Assuming Stewart's Road up to the residential dwelling that's on Stewart's Road. Um I provided numbers that were um that I can justify from the use of twenty twenty four's operational budget. Um in predicting how much it would cost to bring the road up to a minimum standard. Um uh it no means is the the report for this evening's discussion. To decide whether or not the assumptions would take place, not take place, how the assumption would take place. Whether we're going to give the cost of that to the residents on Stewart's Road or keeping the cost within the municipality. Um this report is to provide the information that through the bylaw that we currently have. Uh to the assumption of a residential or a road. through the bylaw twenty seventeen dash zero one five, there are, uh, criteria within the bylaw that we are to discuss and the guidelines for council to understand uh, how they would approve that action. And one of those guidelines is that we are to consult, uh, legal opinion. And when you look at the, the way that, of the land, the way that Stewart Roads run through, uh, properties, the road really is not within the townships, road allowance that is currently being used. So I would recommend that we do seek legal counsel in the regards that we don't know if we own it to make those assumptions anyways. Uh, we should be required to understand the title of our land there. And, uh, without knowing any of that, it's hard to bring to council a premise to keep moving forward if we don't own the land without being able to recognize what that also could have cost and who also has to be involved in that occurrence. That's the end of my story.
That's it?
Yes.
Uh, comments, questions? I, it, may I just to start off, just ahead of one point, but we did, I did receive an email uh, that stated that, uh, uh, the report states that, uh, the residences, uh, were requesting updated, uh, usage. Um, and this particular email stated that not every resident on the road uh, wishes, uh, to have the road upgraded or has complained about, uh, service in the past. Uh, it should be noted that council, uh, has dealt with a, a number of ratepayers, uh, who have made requests. Um, because it's not just the two residences that touch the road, there are other, uh, ratepayers that, that have, uh, access to the road. So, uh, this report that you've come up with is wonderful, and, uh, I, I really appreciate what, what you laid out here. Um, I, I think it, it's a a, a, a great financial, like, you've really trimmed.
I trimmed.
You trimmed.
Oh, yes, because, and that would be include a sad time to that project.
You'd have that labor.
Right. But like I said, without knowing, if we don't know what we own, or what entails, what would entail that whole entire area without speaking to a legal person, which could be just simply as just checking what our title says. Um, and actually, it was a great segue with, uh, Steve being here. Uh, most of the properties down there, I want to say most, uh, are one, original one hundred acres, lots of records, so there is likely no surveys on record to actually show where the road is and what we own.
Right.
As a, as the municipality. So without that understanding, I, I honestly could not go further with recommending anything because I don't know the consequences or the financial consequence of not knowing where our land is to begin with. That was, uh, the intent of this report.
Okay, so I'm sorry I cut you off.
I was thinking you'd cover some of. My first question would be, uh, is there other, to do the, uh, proper road, are we gonna have to get permission from other landowners? She said we have five people live along the street, two of them before the bridge, and three after.
So if the property isn't within our properties, that's where you start getting into discussions as, uh, do we need to purchase property where the road already lies? Uh, are the participants willing to donate that? Is there, there's a lot of, uh, assumption if we don't honestly get a legal opinion? I don't want to offer that assumption without that.
The, my understanding of the bylaw is that, uh, if people wanted this road done, they would put in a proposal first, a written proposal.
A hundred percent.
Is that what that?
Uh, not to the extent that coming to council.
Council directed staff to undertake this exercise, not that it would follow the bylaw. See, it's immediate from the bylaw already. By instructing staff to carry this out.
Well, I just.
Can I have a, oh, go ahead, sorry, Bill. Councillor.
They think we're jumping the gun by con- contacting a lawyer, and once, until we've got a written request from the property owners, because if you say there's five property owners, that's all five people interested in this.
A part of the process, as you can see with the bylaw, is, uh, if someone was to apply, it would be their due diligence to speak to the other property owners.
That's right.
As the applicant.
That's right, so.
But we did ask staff to come out to it, to look into, uh, um, feasibility study, not only for this road, but also for another road that we have seasonal, seasonal. And whatever decision is reached on one has to impact the other as well.
Yes, I agree, but it.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Robert.
Go ahead, councillor.
I, I, I agree with the recommendation, and I agree with what you just said, Mayor Ghul, that this is, should be part of a wider strategy to deal with the side roads that were, that had their status changed a number of years ago, and now have basically landlocked property owners. And we talk a lot about housing development. Well, there are people who have property on these seasonal roads who can't develop them, or can't get severances, or, or, you know, build the homes on them. I think this is the first step. I like the recommendation, and I do agree that we need to have uh, the legal opinion and the survey. We own the property, we own the road allowance. Where is the road allowance? And, um, I'm in favor of the recommendation, and I think it's part of a wider strategy to, um, develop the municipality. And we, again, we talk a lot about housing. We have, we need to open up some property for that. And one last point, our auditor said, spend some money.
Uh, councillor, Matty.
Um, great report, and, uh, I'm in agreement with, with most of it. Um, the only part that bothers me a bit is the, uh, so we, we don't know where the borders of our road is as a municipality. Uh, so we're going to have, uh, residents share the cost of determining where our road is. The survey, um, as, uh, Mr. MacArthur alluded, can be for a property minimum, say, six thousand up to whatever, sixty. So for a road, I have no idea where that would stand. So I just think that, uh, when we're talking about municipal infrastructure like roads, those costs shouldn't be borne by individual residents, but it's, uh, a cost borne by the municipality as a whole. I think that should be the approach taken with this. Other than that, I find, uh.
Could you clarify that again, councillor?
The cost of doing a survey, I believe, should not be borne by the residents. I believe that should be borne by the municipality. And, and even the cost of the road improvement should not be borne by the residents, but the individual residents in the area, but it's, it's infrastructure for the municipality, municipality owns it, so they should be paying for it. My view.
Any other comments? I would go back to our bylaw, which states that if anybody wants to do a development, they initially pay for the upgrade of the road to do the development. So if you have a municipal road, and you're putting in that road for one resident, that one resident, or two residents, or three, or whatever the case may be, would pay for the, the upgrade of the road. Um, uh, so that they have the access to the road. And I know that this, this report is like, less than half of any previous estimate that has been brought in for that area. Um, there are a number of residents in the township who have told me adamantly that they don't feel that that should be part of their taxation to pay for a road for one person. Uh, that's, so that's just my comment on it. That's not, but we haven't really got to that point yet, have we?
I just want to say that the motion before you, you've amended it, so it should be moved by you because you did add something to the recommendation. And what council directed staff to do was to do exactly what Anne has done.
Right.
Which is not in line with the bylaw. The bylaw, as councillor Morton said, is why are we doing this when the bylaw says we're doing this because council directed staff to do this? And, and the report that you have in front of you is what council directed us to do. And the recommendation is that we must seek legal advice on whether or not the title, and I don't think that that part of the seeking legal advice is on the taxpayer right now, is on those roads. This is what we want to do, is to search that we own this land. So we will bear the cost of this first legal opinion to confirm that we actually own all the properties that the road is situated on, so that won't be part of the next step. And at the same time, what Mayor Ghul has added into the recommendation, if I could read that.
Yes, please.
Is that legal be requested to communicate with all property owners to the bridge, because we're not talking about the bridge and beyond, on Stewart's Road to gauge their collective willingness to pay all costs associated with the municipality, assuming Stewart's Road, legal, material, labor surveys, et cetera, and that these results form part of the next steps recommendation brought by legal to council. So as councillor Morton alluded to, we do need to survey all the property owners to see if their first, it has to be a public registered, actually, invitation to come to a public session to say whether or not they want the road to be assumed. And if not, then council has to bear that opposition, or, um, who all is in favor, receive that comment, consider it when making their final decision as to whether abide by what the bylaw says or not. Um, who pays, who doesn't pay, that's what I meant by that, uh, whether all people agree or not, that's council's decision in the end. But to protect the municipality, we first need to know what, because you've sent us out on this job to do, whether or not we own all the land that the road is situated on. And what Anne has provided so far is, as you've said, a very scaled-down dollar value to what councils of the past have heard, the actual cost to bring that up. I, I believe, um, and I did look back, that I did see some minutes somewhere, that was originally somewhere around eighty thousand to bring it up to, and, uh, Anne's assumption, which also needs to be verified, and labor costs added to spread the gravel, that sort of thing, is a very conservative, but I think realistic, um, dollar value from all of her experience, to say that it'd be about thirty-six thousand dollars, plus the cost of legal, plus the, if, and so then council decides after the legal has taken care of it, does the land belong to us, first of all? And are people genuinely interested in, so surveying, surveying, uh, the residents just to get a, before we go down this road, are you interested, yes or no? And then bringing that back to council for council to decide whether or not you're gonna abide by the bylaw or not.
So.
I have a, one last comment. And it's a bit, maybe a history, history lesson. I think maybe thirty years ago, a previous council made a decision to change the status of these, a number of these side roads from a year-round maintained municipal road to a seasonal road, probably as a cost savings. Short-term thinking, and now we are, you know, we're having to deal with that short-term thing. I think we need to have a long-term vision for this, not a, not a Stewart's Road, not focus on Stewart's Road alone, but just, uh, look forward. Long-term vision, housing development.
And this one's on first. The next one is the other one that has residential on it, and that's Latimer's Lane.
That's on, so. If, correct me if I'm wrong, please. The way this resolution is worded, we're going to legal, we're paying the expense to check the first legal. And then, uh, we're asking them, is there any problems moving forward? That's not something we're asking the residents or the property ratepayers to, um, uh, observe the cost of.
I'm, I'm not, uh, suggesting that to council, although that would be council's final decision. I'm not suggesting that to council because in, at the end, it is our, or not our land.
Right.
Right, so if we don't know where it is, I can't, uh, confidently provide you with correct information moving forward if this is a, uh, determination that council would like to investigate, or just, and refine desire as to look at.
And again, going back to the bylaw, it does say seek legal opinion on whether or not you own the land first.
Right. And then the last revision is just, uh, that, that legal be asked to communicate with all of the residents. As I mentioned, there has been, you know, uh, other communications from other residents. Because if it's something that can't move forward based on what, how the residents reply to legal, then we can't move forward. I mean, it's, it's.
We, we as a council, we as a council represent the taxpayers of the municipality. We don't, I don't think we have to ask permission from the people living on the road, whether we're going to build a road, or ask other, uh, individual taxpayers if it's okay if we spend, you know, tax, tax money. That's our job. That's what they voted in to do.
Thank you. Councillor Morton, question for Anne. Uh, the seasonal road is so, so many feet wide, why? A, uh, old maintenance road, is it the same width?
Um, after, I don't want to go against the bylaw, and because the bylaw has a schedule in it that says what the width is. However, I'm in process of reviewing the road need study that has occurred with the municipality, and the MTO standards vary according to your average daily, daily traffic count. So looking at other municipalities' road need studies to compare them to, which I haven't presented that information, it's just something I've been looking at. A road with an average daily traffic count of under fifty is permitted to be five meters. And some, some road need studies, and then other road need studies, uh, four meters, uh, surface width. So, and those studies are presented by civil engineers. So I don't know if the surface width is appropriate for the average daily traffic count, which is another factor that would have to be brought into the conversation.
So that, but the township owns a certain amount of property on the road allowance?
It should be sixty-six feet.
Sixty-six feet.
Yes, from edge to edge.
Right, so that even if we did an improvement on the road, we would still be within our own, if, if we owned, it would, it's not like what I was getting at was, do we have to buy a property along the edge?
Right.
That belongs to somebody else.
See, I, I don't think we should have to buy property, uh, just like, um, like Steve had mentioned, that, uh, often a condition of severance is that if there's a gap between the road and the property, usually that has to be given to us. So, however, there's lots of original hundred acre lots here that aren't severed, so it has to be determination of where are we and what do we know? We have to, I think we need to ask a lawyer, what do we know? So that we can move forward in educating council on a proper decision.
But extrapolating it further than if we did have to go, then we'd have to get permission from that landowner.
That's right.
Exactly. That's where I was needing eventually to.
That's okay, we got there.
All right. Any other questions, comments? All right, I'll read the resolution and call it to a vote. Council directed staff to investigate the cost of assuming seasonal roads where residential development has occurred. And whereas bylaw twenty seventeen dash zero one five provides the legal opinion uh, to be sought to ensure the validation of the title of the lands required to assume a seasonal road, Stewart's Road to the bridge in this instance. Now therefore be resolved, and council received report uh, titled to present council with the information to further the inquiry regarding assuming Stewart's Road. Furthermore, council instructs staff, uh, to seek the legal opinion of the title of the, uh, at the risk of assuming the road to better inform council of the process, uh, processes needed to proceed. And furthermore, that legal be requested to communicate with all property owners to the bridge on Stewart's Road to gauge their collective willingness to pay all costs associated with municipality, assuming Stewart's Road, legal, material, labor, survey, et cetera, and that these results form part of the next steps, uh, and recommendations brought before legal to council. So we're not saying that that has to happen, we're saying that that's the next step in bringing it to council. So any last questions, last go-around? None? Then I'll call it to a vote. All those in favor of the resolution? None? Then I'll call it to a vote. All those in favor of the resolution? So that is carried unanimously. Thank you.
Did you get a second or a match?
Uh, yeah, it was Counselor Morton and Counselor Manson as the second.
Then you changed it to Mayor Gould as the counselor who moved in.
That's fine.
Oh, that's right. You did, because I meant.
Yeah, because you amended.
Right. All right. Uh, so it is uh, eight ten and Counselor Grant has rejoined us. So agencies, boards and committees. Good night, you two. Um, uh, first up is the uh, North Bay Madawar Conservation Authority. Uh, that will be Counselor Morton.
I submitted a report at our February twelfth meeting and they only changed my report would be that our next meeting has been changed from Wednesday the twelfth of March to Monday the tenth of March.
East Nippising Planning Board, um, uh, I'll, I'll carry this one, Counselor Grant. Uh, we met last night. Uh, we did talk about a number of things and I'm certain that going forward to the next meeting, I have a few questions based on the, the presentation made by Steve for the planning board. Um, I have provided the minutes from the last meeting that we had and they're in the agenda package. Any questions, planning board? No?
Just have to excuse myself to make a call.
Sure. Uh, physicians recruitment. Um, we met yesterday for the physicians recruitment. Um, uh, I will break forth the minutes, again, when they are approved of the next, at the next meeting. But we did discuss um, that we do have three physicians on the recruitment track. And those three physicians were, one was supposed to start in July of next year, uh, which is uh, uh, Dr. Wilkins' daughter. Uh, she has now postponed her um, uh, start date for another six months because of some situations uh, in, in her life. And we uh, certainly hope that she will be starting uh, in January of two thousand and twenty uh, seven. And then there's another uh, doctor starting in June of twenty-seven and another one uh, in June of twenty-eight. And we're still working on the last and the fourth uh, doctor for this uh, this committee. Um, of course, uh, there are a number of eminent retirements in, in the Madawar area with some of the physicians who are uh, saying that they're rapidly at where they want to retire sooner rather than later. Um, if everything goes as planned, there's no physician shortage in Madawar for the people here in the area going to the Madawar Hospital. So that's the end of my report for physicians recruitment. Madawar Regional Police Services for Counselor Grant.
I just simply have, there hasn't been a meeting since our last meeting. I just wrote the report that our next meeting is March twenty-sixth.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, Canadian Ecology Center, the same thing. There hasn't been a meeting since our last meeting. Uh, they meet um, a little less often than once a month. So I will have something um, coming up. Castle home exit strategy. I, I don't want to drag this meeting out until midnight, so I'll try to keep it very, very short. Um, it was decided that, as I mentioned in the last meeting, that we would form a committee to uh, approach the government to um, uh, talk about the costs of the rebuild. And unfortunately, um, what has happened is interest costs have gone up, costs have gone up. The total cost of the rebuild uh, is a hundred twenty-one million dollars with interest, probably another hundred and ten million dollars. Uh, the provincial government is doing a, a, a grant of, for construction uh, which totals fifty million dollars. But that grant is not payable upfront. So it doesn't lower the construction costs, so we wind up paying the interest on the full amount. Um, and uh, it was requested in this committee that has been formed, and I'm on the committee, uh, the mayor of North Bay, the mayor of Paulassen and two counselors from East Ferris. And Donna has spoken to our auditors and uh, uh, come up with what it's going to cost each taxpayer uh, in Calvin for the next thirty years to continue on with this grant. And the, uh, this, not this grant, the continue on with this, is cost for the construction. And so what this committee is doing is looking at getting another grant from the government to reduce that by, it's over fifty percent, isn't it?
Yes, it was that Castle Home was deemed to be ineligible because it started construction prior to this grant being announced. So the committee's been formed to, you know, when they were here saying we need this top-up, why they came around to all council members, all councils in the region. So the committee's been formed to continue that work, to go to advocate to the government to get the top-up grant. So Castle Arms, or Castle Homes, sorry, has requested that we do is, what is the cost to the average taxpayer at the end of construction in a percentage rate? And then what would it be if we had top-up dollars? So the figures that came in today with the top-up dollars, if we were to receive top-up, it was a little one point zero nine percent average taxpayer would pay as a result of the Castle Home construction without that new top-up, an average of four point six percent. But I did something even uh, more minute than that is, I broke it down into residential and farm and then to industry and then, because we have the pipeline, so the pipeline alone at four point six percent average over the thirty, or twenty-five years, the pipeline alone would see an average increase of about twenty-eight thousand dollars annually. The average taxpayer who are residential and farm would see an increase of less than eighty dollars a year if we receive no more top-up. Eighty dollars a year for the next twenty-five years. So that's not what they asked for, but I thought it was important that we do bring it out that way. Sorry, that's our next call and he wasn't. Um, so uh, we, we, I did it that way so that you could get a better understanding of what that really meant for the residences, the residential taxpayer and the farm, industry and pipeline, because pipeline does skew. You know, when you think they're going up by twenty-eight thousand a year, when a taxpayer would only see an increase of about seventy, eighty, under eighty dollars a year.
No, that increase is only for the construction top-up. We still have to pay for the next thirty years, the operating cost, which is also part of the taxes that each resident will pay. So it's the total package, but what we're protesting in this exit committee is just the construction costs. And you get?
Just, just to, even just to have a little bit, so, you know, when you do, when you do economics too, just to try to maybe help make a case as well in some, some accidents is, you know, you have an opportunity cost, everything. So, you know, you know, if it's, if we say eighty dollars a year for residents, an opportunity cost, because what else? You know, could you spend the eighty dollars on, right? You, you know what I'm saying? So um, be interesting, you know, to maybe, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a lot of money and, you know, eighty, eighty dollars a year for resident, uh, I don't know all the numbers that you guys have, but uh, you know, okay, maybe it doesn't seem that bad, but what, what, you know, what is missing? What, you know? It's a significant cost. We could build bridges, we can do all kinds of stuff with that, and we got to export it to North Bay.
Can I add that that's not, so this committee that you're on and this exercise that we're all participating on at the, you know, anyone who is a member municipality of Castle Home is separate from the continued exit strategy efforts that the four municipalities are continuing to, to try to.
We're working.
That was my question, so any updates on that? On the legal exit strategy?
Uh, that, that exit strategy is right now, at this very moment, very fluid and full of lots of rumors. I've, I've discussed them with our C A O and unfortunately, um, I, I, it's just, nothing is concrete at this point in time, but we are working as exactly as we had discussed in the last meeting.
We haven't had a meeting, but before municipalities have not had a meeting about the exit strategy. We had to answer your question, no update about where legal, what, if legal has done anything on that front.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so that's the end of our ABCs. Um, I need to move her in a second for, for the Counselor Morton and seconded by Counselor, you both put your hand up at exactly the same time, so any media. All right, well, we'll take Counselor Manson. Uh, now therefore be resolved, the council for the corporation of the municipality of Calvin accepts the agency's board committee reports and all minutes provided by council members at this meeting. All those in favor? And that motion is carried.
Can I ask one thing?
Sure.
Just before we go into the next session, uh, because this is a public open session, we've been receiving a lot of calls about where the votes taking place. Elections Ontario hasn't done a very good job of informing people and we only know because they're using this facility, so not as we said earlier, not a lot of people watch our videos, but we'll, you know, we put it on there. It's not, again, our job to promote Elections Ontario. Pardon me?
It's, it is on the voter's card.
Yeah, it's on, but many people haven't received their voters. A lot of people have not received them. So for the public information, it is taking place here and we only know that because it's our hall and.
Two weeks ago, they only had three candidates run. Now they've got six.
So it's, uh, they, they're going to be here from eight-thirty in the morning?
Don't know what time the opening of voters card will tell you, but they're here from Saturday.
Nine till nine?
The news on, on the radio, it says nine to nine.
Yeah.
I'm presuming. I don't know.
Nine, nine. We have a meeting planned for that day, so I guess we'll have to postpone that.
We have a meeting?
C E, C E M C meeting after.
Thursday? Yeah, or we put it someplace else. Yeah, let's talk about that tomorrow.
Yes.
If someone doesn't have the voter's card, they just show up with their identification, is that?
Driver's license and a bill that says.
Yeah, proof of address. It's all, I would recommend people search that out online, right, just to get it right, but which you need proof of address and proof of ID.
Right.
And I have watching staff to not answer those questions because they're not our election. We don't have all the rules, and as you said, the best to call.
Yeah, it's best to look because it's certain, they want certain pieces. It's all available on.
Problem is, like provincial elections, you don't traditionally get a high voter turnout anyway, just like, you know, like it's just cascading number.
All right.
Provincial municipal.
Uh, if I can move forward, then the closed, closed meeting, I need to move her in a second. Counselor Morton, Counselor Manson. Uh, now therefore be resolved, the council for the corporation is called Calvin, moving to a closed session at eight twenty-four. Yeah. Uh, to discuss personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal employees. Uh, all those in favor? And that is carried. So thank you very much for attending, Pauline. Right, you stuck it out right to the end.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks.
Anne, thank you for coming.
No problem.
In reference.
We don't, so you have a good holiday.
And listen, have a safe drive home. It's not supposed to start freezing until midnight, so roads will get bad at midnight.